Good evening. Thank you for joining us. We will be getting started here at 6:30. Okay, we're going to call the Castle Hills Regular City Council meeting into order and determine if a quorum is present. Quorum is present. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Harada, will you lead us? Thank you, Mr. Harada. Tonight, we also have a special guest, so we will do an invocation. Mr. Meehan, will you lead us?
Loving Father, I give you today all that I do. May all who walk through the doors of Antonian and inhabit the city of Castle Hills know and feel your love and presence. Give me a heart that shows compassion for those around me and courage to face each day with grace. Help me to live with integrity and promote justice among all people. Show me how to love as Jesus loves and continue to show responsibility in all I think, say, and do. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Meehan. And I'd like to thank my colleague, Mr. Joyce, for reminding me that that is something that we should do a little more often. Next up, we have a special recognition, a presentation of our proclamation to Antonian Preparatory High School. We have with us Mr. John Meehan and his son Joe Meehan here to receive this proclamation on behalf of the school. They reached out to me. And the last week was Catholic Schools Weekend. We wanted to take an opportunity here at the city of Castle Hills to recognize Antonian for everything that they've done for the past fifty
Sixty-four years.
Sixty-four years. Been a great community partner and grateful for that. I do have a proclamation that I wanted to read. Mr. Shaw, do I need to get a vote on this? Perfect. Okay, where, this is a lot of whereas, and I'm also an alumni, so full disclosure. Whereas Antonian College Reparatory High School was established in nineteen sixty-four in the city of Castle Hills. And whereas Antonian has regularly been identified as the premier Catholic educational institution for the academic, athletic, and extracurricular successes of its students on a local, state, and national level. And whereas Antonian has been recognized as a national Blue Ribbons Catholic School of Excellence for their work in providing a premier coeducational Catholic education. Whereas over the last fifty-seven years, over fifty-five thousand women and men have graduated from Antonian. And whereas the city of Castle Hills recognizes the value and accomplishments of Antonian and commends Antonian on its service of developing tomorrow's leaders today. Now therefore, I J R Trevino, Mayor of the city of Castle Hills, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim February eighth, twenty twenty-two, as Antonian College Reparatory High School Day in the city of Castle Hills, Texas. I have here unto sent my hand and caused the seal of the city of Castle Hills to be affixed to this on the day eighth of February, twenty twenty-two. Thank you all so much for everything.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have citizen comments. Do we have anybody signed up to speak on non-agenda items? Okay, well then we'll go into the new business, the consent agenda. Okay, if you, if there's something on the agenda that you would like to speak about, we can speak about, you can speak about it right before we get into the item. And if it's something that's not on the agenda, completely random, you can come up here right now and you have three minutes. So Ms. Wynn? Okay, so the PFC is an agenda item. So as soon as we get to that, you can speak on it. No, no problem. In that case, we will proceed to the consent agenda.
Mayor had asked that we table the financials that Ms. Clarkson is still working on the revenue side of the year end, so we'll bring them back next month.
Okay, so then it would just be the meeting minutes?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. May?
I move that the city council adopt items five point one and five point two, the consent agenda.
Okay. Mr. Rapley, wasn't it just five point one?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. May?
I'll amend that.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt five point one. Do we have a second?
I'll say again.
Mr. Joyce, thank you. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. First item of business, discussion of possible action on resolution number twenty twenty-two dash oh two dash oh eight, adopting a new investment policy for the city of Castle Hills. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the, our investment policy that we've been needing to update. Last time we updated, it was in two thousand twenty, right before we worked on going through the certificate obligation process. At this point, we need to update it and, and the background and the memo there, we've written that the Public Fund Investment Act requires the city to adopt the investment policy. The act also requires the governing body review and adopt the investment policy. We prepared this investment policy in conjunction with Ms. Clarkson, our financial consultant. And Councilman Gregory is our Treasury, has a copy and is reviewed. And I would defer to him if he has any questions directly on the policy. But other than that, Mayor, it's a standard policy that we need to have been updated this year. Thank you.
Mr. Gregory as Treasurer, do you have any comments?
I recommend the council approve this.
Okay, do we have a motion? Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty-two dash C or two dash zero eight.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. May, a second by Mr. Gregory. Any discussion? We got the second. All in favor? Yeah, yeah, and just thank you, council. Okay, next up, we have six point two, discussion approval on ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh two dash oh eight, ordering a general election for the purpose of electing three aldermen and a special election for the reauthorization of the local sales and use tax in the city of Castle Hills at the rate of one-fourth of a percent to continue providing revenue for maintenance and repair of municipal streets to be held May seventh, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is here and it's been prepared by Ms. Tedford, our city secretary. And this is so we can call the election, the general election and the special election for the sales tax related to the street maintenance as well to renew that.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Mr. Joyce?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh two dash eight, as stated in item six point two.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. A second by Mr. Paul. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Next up, six point three, we have a presentation by Andrew Friedman of Samco Capital on potential future assistance issuance of certificates of obligation for streets, drainage, and other municipal projects and discussion. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor. If you want to go ahead and do the screen share on that?
I already gave them, sir. I passed those out.
Is that an updated one, Andrew, by chance?
Okay. So before we get into this council, previous meetings, we had discussed how successful we've been with the issuance of debt to accomplish so many projects throughout the city. Think we've probably done more in this last eighteen months than we have in several years put together. And I think that the city has shown, we've shown the city rather, that we have the ability to borrow money at a great rate to do more projects that we know how to do professionally, we know how to engage the right people to get it done successfully. And I think we're at a point where interest rates are about to go up, and I'd like to counsel to explore the idea of borrowing additional funds so that we can address some of the streets and projects that haven't been taken care of. So Mr. Friedman's here to share a little bit.
Real quick, just counsel, obviously, in December, we took, we took the amended and updated capital improvements plan, which showed the results of three years of work, but it also showed what we still need to do. That particularly showed that at the start of the CIP, we needed ten million dollars to reconstruct all the streets in Castle Hills that were in very poor condition. We've been able to do almost six million dollars. We still have about four million to do. And part of Mr. Friedman's presentation is, is determining and reviewing with you the potential capacity to borrow for further dollars to do street work and potentially for the drainage projects. I plan next month to bring forward, if not next month or March, to bring the updated CIP for the drainage projects, which at the time, we needed about sixteen million dollars to address all of the drainage projects in the city. And we're closer to about nine or ten million now to address the rest of those projects within the watershed. But Mr. Friedman here, again, is here to tell you what we can and can't do moving forward with the certificates of obligation. Ms. Frieden?
Thank you very much. Have the privilege of serving as financial advisor to the city of Castle Hills. Worked with you all up to a year and a half ago on that successful issuance of the first roughly ten million dollars to tackle streets and drainage projects. Very pleased that it's been successful for you all in discussions with Mr. Rapley over the last six, eight months, looking at how do we proceed and tackle more capital improvements? And what is that cost? And so what I wanted to review with you this evening in this presentation behind the first page is a look at, this is a tax rate impact analysis. This looks at just the interest and sinking portion of the city's budget, where we levy a separate ad valorem tax on top of the maintenance and operations tax that strictly to pay debt service issued. So part of those COs that we issued in summer of twenty twenty is repaid from your interest and sinking tax portion of your tax rate. When we sold that debt at a level amortization, meaning roughly principal, equal principal and interest payments over twenty years, we levied a three point eight cents tax to pay that. As our tax base grows over time, it, that same level debt service, because it's a fixed payment over twenty years, requires less interest in the sinking fund pennies to repay. So as we get growth and generally in Texas, certainly here, I expect we'll see in July, our tax base continues to grow. That gives us capacity at the same number of pennies to support additional debt for more general fund projects. So this first page here looks at going back to fiscal twenty twenty-one and your certified freeze-adjusted taxable assessed value, how many pennies it takes to support that annual debt service payment. You can see that what's already outstanding listed as existing debt for fiscal years twenty twenty-one through twenty forty. So you can see that we started out levying three point eight cents in fiscal twenty twenty-two, which we're now in, that's dropped to about two point eight cents. And then as we get more growth, and I've modeled here what I think will be conservative, but certainly will know more come July, five percent growth this summer in your tax base, then three percent growth for two consecutive years. And then we assume we're not going to grow anymore at all. And that's a conservative standpoint from a financial modeling perspective. Certainly, we expect that our tax base will continue to grow, but what that does is it allows us to structure bonds and not run into the hope being that we don't run into a circumstance where we do have an economic slowdown. And we've been projecting that we're going to grow at six percent every year in perpetuity. When we don't get that growth, all of a sudden, we're having to raise taxes to support a project that's already been sold. So we try to be overly conservative and assume that we're not going to grow. That way, we're never going to meet that worst case scenario. And so with that, it leaves us in a position, because that's the same approach that we took in two thousand twenty, that our INS tax rate is going to continue to decline. So one of the things that we're going to look at in the next page will be, well, as we get growth, what are our options in terms of our tax rate and the potential to support other general fund projects at the total, same total taxable, so same total tax rate, excuse me. So I've got two tables here. The for top one listed as option one. And this looks at your historical taxable assessed value going back five years, what your total tax rate is, and then broken out by your maintenance and operations portion of your tax rate and your interest and sinking portion of your tax rate. If you'll recall, the legislature in their last legislative cycle, put some handcuffs on cities. You can now increase your maintenance and operations portion of your tax rate, or your levy rather, by three and a half percent over what that prior year's levy was without triggering an election. And so as you get growth that exceeds five or three and a half percent, you start losing your maintenance and operation, your tax rate starts going down, and your total tax rate goes down with it. Certainly, you know, an option for you all, as we look at funding and supporting additional projects to point you to option two, where we try to maintain the same total tax rate for the city and take what we're losing on the M and O portion of our tax rate by only going up, that's three and a half percent of your maintenance and operations levy from the prior year and adding that to the interest and sinking portion, try to create some debt service capacity to fund capital projects while still maintaining the same fifty-two point four nine cent tax rate from the prior year. So as we look at the next page, that's the, the kind of fundamental assumption that we're taking here. And so if we flip to the page four of this attachment, this is that same tax rate impact analysis we looked at on page two, but now you see in the middle adding one and a half million dollars in certificates of obligation to be supported from INS taxes. And it increases the INS tax rate up to three point five five, I'm sorry, yeah, three point five five cents, maintaining a fifty-two point four nine total tax rate in the next year. Again, this assumes we're going to get five percent growth. If it's greater than that five percent, then it could potentially be more. It's, it's always at your discretion where you want your tax rate set in a given year. But if that were to hold true, and we get five percent growth, we could maintain the existing total tax rate and support a million and a half dollars in certificates of obligation to fund street improvements, whatever general fund improvements you all may have prioritized without increasing the total tax rate of the city. We'll pivot a little bit onto the next page, because we've got a drainage fund capital improvement also. Looking at your drainage fund revenues, again, this is now we're getting away from property taxes and getting into your drainage revenues in part is, is digital billboard revenues that you all receive. We sold that twenty twenty CO, it's also supported for drainage projects out of this same revenue stream. But we generated last year three hundred ninety-one thousand dollars in revenue, and we had roughly three hundred thousand dollars earmarked for that existing debt service. So we have a hundred thousand dollars in capacity, as it were, to support additional projects. That, just by coincidence, happens to be about a million and a half dollars that you could issue for drainage projects using that excess revenue that the drainage system generally currently provides for. So in aggregate, without raising fees, without raising the tax rate, the city would have the opportunity to support roughly three million dollars in COs. Any amount that for, if you have projects that go above that million and a half dollars on either the general fund or the, the drainage side of projects, every million dollars you borrow on the tax rate side would need about one penny of, of additional INS tax rate to support it. So if you borrowed an additional two million dollars, you'd need to see the INS tax rate go up two pennies. And then anything in the drainage side above what we're currently showing here is available revenue. We need a revenue stream to be able to support that. And so that would be in all likelihood, ad valorem taxes as well. So that is really the, the update I have for you all. I'm happy to answer any and all questions that you have. Really just wanted to get, this is kind of a baseline analysis, as Mr. Rapley said, there's a capital improvement plan that's, you know, fresh, you know, off the works, but in order for me to kind of provide a, a better analysis of the projects that you're considering taking on and that implication, you know, we'd need to get those priority of projects and, and what you all would propose proceeding with to provide that financial analysis. But the, the rule of thumb in Castle Hills case is a million dollars amortized over twenty years is roughly sixty-five, seventy thousand dollars, which is roughly one penny on your tax rate. So it's, in y'all's case, pretty easy to do the simple math as you're determining and prioritizing projects. So happy to answer any questions that you all have. And Mr. Rapley, if I've left anything out, I'm happy to circle back. Yes, sir.
Mr. Gregory? This is for twenty years?
Yes, sir.
What is the anticipated yield?
Interest rates are moving up as it happens. Right now, this is modeled at about three percent on an average interest rate. We'd be below that certainly right now. If you were considering selling debt this summer, it's really, nobody has a crystal ball where interest rates are going. So I feel right now that this is a pretty conservative estimate for rates. Right now, we'd probably be around two point two five to two point three five percent twenty-year tax exempt debt.
Goldman Sachs came out today, their analysts saying they expect five interest rate increases this year. That would put this, so it seems to me the sooner we do this, the better. But if it is five interest rates and not a quarter all the time, with a half and then four quarters, where would that, our approximate charge? The percent, what would it be? You think it would be in the neighborhood of three percent still?
It's really anybody's guess. The one thing that we saw during the pandemic was the federal government has levers it can pull. And in twenty twenty, they were pumping cash into, into the economy, which drove interest rates down when all of us thought interest rates would be going up, especially when markets really froze up at the beginning of the pandemic in March. I don't expect that to happen. Certainly here, they've got pretty clear indications that they're going to raise rates. They're easing back on quantitative easing. So three percent, I'd hate to be wrong, and it'd be four percent. But I don't expect them to move that quickly. We've seen a lot of interest rate increase just in the month of January. Really, the, the market pricing in that expected Fed action ahead of its announcements. And, and so I would hope that that, there's some economists out there that expect municipal yields to taper. One of the bigger headwinds I see for all of my municipal governments that are tackling projects is project cost and the inflation that's associated with materials and labor now, that seem to be increasing at a, at an ever rising clip. So that, that, that's another, you know, just huge question mark out there in terms of tackling projects.
If you recall, council, when we issued the twenty twenty COs, we had a range of about one point four to one point eight. And I would assume we'd have to go back through the ratings and hopefully just have our double A reaffirmed in this short time since the last issuance. I would hope that would be the case.
And I certainly expect those financial position is held. Y'all came out of the gate with an initial credit rating, very high in the investment grade category. Helps you get the very lowest interest rates possible. So if and when we do sell bonds, you will price as well as can be expected. And we will go through a rating process. The, the bond sale method that we went through, if you'll recall from twenty twenty, was a competitive sale method where rather than picking an investment bank to underwrite the bond issue, we put it out there for every investment bank around the country to submit their best bid on your council meeting date at eleven AM. And what that does is it forces everybody to come to the table with their best bid, given the high demand for municipal bonds and, and very active participation in that competitive market. We're getting the best yields possible through that method, that this summer proved out in one instance to be about ten basis points better through the, through the negotiated yield curve.
What's the maximum amount we can borrow without affecting your credit rating, do you think?
That's a little bit trickier of a question. When you're supporting it with ad valorem taxes, that's the, that's the strongest credit, that's the full faith and credit of the city essentially. So your property tax base, people pay their property taxes on time by and large. And so we'll start getting pressure on it. If you were to go north of another, probably ten million dollars, it's going to raise additional questions. But again, when it's supported by property taxes and we're going to raise our property tax to cover that payment, the credit rating agencies don't see anything that's not overly concerning to them. It's when you get into, you know, if you had a utility system or a drainage where we were implementing drainage fees, and that was going to be securing the repayment of the bonds, that would start getting into some, running into some headwinds if we were pushing things like bond coverage requirements. But with the full faith and credit of the city on a property tax secured obligation, I don't see that there would be a, a huge issue. The, the headwind would probably not be from the credit rating agencies. It would be from citizens out there who wouldn't want to see their property tax rate, you know, or their property taxes going up, you know, doubling or something like that. That's.
So if we borrowed, say, eight, eight, nine million dollars, what type of increase in the property tax rate? Ballpark, would you think we have to look at?
One penny per million, and we get the first million and a half for free, maybe, you know, on a nine and a half million dollar borrow, and we'd be seeing our INS tax rate jump up to eleven and a half cents.
It pays not to degrade the property tax foundation of the city. Got to keep it strong.
That's true. And by the way, city of Castle Hills enjoys a very low tax rate compared to a lot of cities, especially your size, fifty-two and a half cents roughly. You see many cities that are pushing eighty cents. So that's, you know, relative to your peers in Texas, in the San Antonio MSA, you all are a low tax community.
And the ceiling set by law is a dollar and a quarter, isn't it?
A dollar fifty.
A dollar fifty. Thank you.
And council, as a reminder, in the staff memo, I wanted to have Mr. Friedman remind council about the purpose of borrowing because, you know, we do need about four million for reconstruction to finish it out, but we have about eight million of mill and overlay. And that's not something we would necessarily borrow money to address because of the, the longevity of the payment life that we want to make sure we keep with reconstruction for twenty-five year lifespan. Just wanted to make that a point.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Mr. Paul?
Just a quick question. You've been using the term bond. We're talking about certificate of obligations like we did last time, correct?
That is correct. I apologize for the.
I just want to be sure that we haven't changed streams here.
No, sir. Certificates of obligation are what we're discussing at this point. Mechanically, a certificate of obligation and a bond operate nearly identically.
Right.
But we are talking about.
Process it and the way you approach it.
Yes, sir.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Esbran?
Mr. Friedman, thank you for your presentation tonight. Appreciate you being here. I, I didn't hear what Mr. Gregory's last question was, where the answer was a buck fifty. So maybe you answered what I'm going to. A penny or two pennies, what does that actually equate to in the increase in property tax for the average home in Castle Hills?
So for a three hundred thousand dollar home, or that's, that's on the property tax rolls of three hundred thousand, a million dollars, one penny increase, roughly thirty dollars a year.
I'm sorry, could you say that last part again?
One penny increase in tax rate, thirty dollars per year.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Mr. Joyce?
Just to clarify, Mr. Friedman, thank you for all the numbers. We appreciate that very much. But clarification, so we can borrow this extra three million without increasing tax rate. But I think we need to keep in mind that the taxes are actually going up anyway. Not because of anything we're doing. It's the county, it's appraisal district in the county. And you mentioned your model's built on a five percent, three percent, three percent for the first three years and flat after that. So that's, that's probably a pretty fair tax increase that the citizens are going to look through, even though the rate stays the same. Am I, am I interpreting that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Freeman, just to clarify that, that the values are increasing, which results in more taxes being due, correct?
As your home value goes up, even if you maintain the same tax rate, A times B equals a larger C.
Thank you, Mr. May?
I, I just have one question, and that has to do with the other part of the equation, which is if we defer infrastructure upkeep and maintenance, every year that we defer that is going to just kick the can down the road. And we don't know anything about labor costs or material costs. And that could result in an extraordinary. or material costs, and that could result in an extraordinary explosion of the ultimate cost down the road. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I mean, that's certainly been my professional experience working with cities around the state. Your engineers who put together, you know, the, the street studies on the degradation of your streets. I've sat through many presentations of those. A dollar to fix a street or to maintain a street today, but deferred over 20 years. Now you're completely rebuilding a street at a much higher cost. So that's deferred maintenance certainly is very, very expensive. There's no doubt. And with the inflation, again, the project tomorrow is going to cost conceivably much more than it is today. And that's been our experience over the last year with some very unfortunate meetings with, with engineers and construction crews and, you know, price of steel being going up, concrete, you name it.
Mr. Gregory?
I've heard that the legislature may or may not be considering limiting cities issuing certificates of obligation or mud bonds. Is there any truth to that or is that just a rumor well told?
The, the legislature has been very consistent, I would say, over the last probably fifteen, 10 years in, in attacking really cities, I would say generally, and your ability to govern yourself. The last legislative session, there was a House bill 1869 that was passed. It limits the ability for cities to issue certificates of obligation. The, where it ended, where it started in the legislative process and where it ended and was adopted into law changed very drastically. Certificates of obligation can no longer be used to construct a new city hall and a new library. Those have to be taken to the, the public for a bond election. Certainly, I've, I've always couched, you know, to my clients that you've got projects that are wants, a city hall, a rec center, you've got projects that are needs, maintaining your assets, streets, water and sewer utility improvements, things of that nature. And that's where we counsel certificates of obligation are, are most appropriately used. You're elected to the city council to make decisions on how to maintain your assets and things of that nature. And certificates of obligation are a very useful tool for that. And in my opinion, an appropriate tool for that, if you wanted to go out and build a rec center with certificates of obligations, I would caution you that that's probably not an appropriate use of, of that funding mechanism.
Mr. Freeman, what's the timeline to where locked into a rate and only because I know that as time goes on, as Mr. Gregory pointed out, rates are likely to go up. Can you give us an approximation of what the timeline looks like?
Sure. So the, the, the process, and we went through this a year and a half ago, roughly, to issue certificates of obligation. It starts with the council adopting a notice of intention resolution. And that's a, that resolution contains within it, the city announcing its intent to borrow money in an amount not to exceed blank dollars. Between the time that's adopted and when you actually sell the bonds, that number can go down, but it cannot go above that not to exceed amount. The city would also outline in that notice what the use of proceeds would be, what you're borrowing this money for and when the city would take action to formally sell those obligations. So once that notice is approved by the council, it would then go to your paper of general circulation to be published for two consecutive weeks in the paper. It also gets posted in a prominent place on the city's website continuously from the time that that's posted until the certificates of obligation are sold. That notice has to run in the paper for 46 day, we, we can sell the certificates 46 days after that first publication. So it's generally two months from that notice of intention to actually locking in an interest rate. And then it's generally 30 days after the certificates are sold before the certificates close through the attorney general for the state of Texas's office and the funds are delivered to the city to be expended.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Rappley?
Mayor Council, I just want to remind you, when we did receive the issuance from 2020, I believe in the fall of October or November. And I've since before this talked to Mr. Friedman, I think he was a little surprised how fast we've been able to move with those projects and those dollars and that we are close to completing the phase one of streets in the next few months. And then the two million dollar Banian Carrollwood project. So we have not sat there. We've moved and we're ready to go to continue to improve our infrastructure here in Castle Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Do we have any other discussion? Thank you, Mr. Freeman. We'll get to the next agenda item. Okay, before we get there, I know we have a couple of people signed up for the PFC. While this talks about the PFC, this isn't the main agenda item. That's the next one. So I, where y'all want to speak, I haven't forgot about you. Next up, we have six point four presentation and discussion by Andrew Friedman, Samco Capital on proposed economic development project, the lofts at Castle Hills, including proposed public facility corporation structure and financial impacts related there too. Mr. Friedman?
The last page in the presentation, I've summarized as, as I understand it. And, and again, this is me representing the city of Castle Hills. I don't represent any developer. I have a fiduciary interest to the city of Castle Hills. So I don't want you to take this as me advocating for a project or, or advocating against a project. Public facilities corporations, and we see this done time to time. I've shared with Mr. Rappley, another client of mine up in the Dallas Fort Worth metroplex. Last Friday closed on a public facilities corporation financing to build a senior apartment living up in Dallas, Fort Worth. Very similar in structure to this, has a lot of other moving pieces. In order to do affordable housing, there's housing credits with the federal government and other parties, but they operate very, very similarly. So a public facilities corporation is a nonprofit entity created by the city and ultimately to give a benefit to the development by virtue of, of not having a property tax on that development. In doing so, as I understand the proposal before you all by the developer of this, the lofts at Castle Hills would be for a 25% partnership in that project where you would share in the, the benefit when that project sells ultimately, but also collect a rental revenue stream of 25% of those rents, which is generally you collect out of the total tax rate that that apartment building would be paying to all taxing entities. Castle Hills currently makes up 21.06% of that property tax bill that that apartment would pay. So the rent revenue is about four percent better than what you would otherwise get. In participating in this, the, the thought being and the impetus for the city to participate in creating this PFC would be to actually get that land developed. Currently, it generates about six to seven thousand dollars in property taxes for the city annually. And we would see that number go up drastically as a multimillion dollar asset is constructed on, on that currently empty lot. And so there's, the PFCs are structured and set up to limit liability to the city. So in no way is the city, the taxpayer at the city of Castle Hills ever going to be on the hook by one way or any other to repay any debt obligation associated with that apartment or anything like that. You're simply providing a benefit to that developer to help his capital stack to make the development work. And then you receive a benefit of one time upfront payment when the transaction closes to be negotiated, but that would flow to the city at closing. If that were to happen six months from now, that would be money free and clear for the city to spend towards whatever it would want. And then once the project and they anticipate it potentially selling maybe five years from now, you would share in that profit from the sale and that would be a cash windfall for the city again through the PFC. But certainly the, the PFC controlled by the city, that cash would flow to the city to be expended towards projects or whatever other means the council at that time would, would deem it for. And then you would also share, because it's a 75 year lease on, on that land for that apartment building. Every time that apartment transacts, that the seller sells the entire apartment building, the city would get 25% of, of any difference between the sales price and the purchase price from the prior transaction each time it transacts. So as far as that, the, the, the PFCs are done very frequently in the state of Texas. Done them for affordable housing in communities where it's just gotten too expensive vacation locales, especially where they can't get staff, they can't get teachers to be able to live and reside where they're working. They've constructed and through the PFC constructed apartment buildings for that purpose. But they're done generally for, for this same purpose as well. And so city is protected from my perspective, looking out for you all's interest. I don't have any concern whether you all determine to proceed with that, with the project or not. Be a different matter, different, different consideration set for you all outside of my purview. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have relative to that or Mr. Rappley, if there's anything you want me to add to it.
Mr. May?
Mr. Friedman, one of those common comments or questions I'm getting is about the tat, the tax abatement. And there's been a lot of discussion about that, but no discussion about the fact that the compensatory part of this plan would include revenue stream sharing with the city. Can you go over that one more time?
Yes, the, the, the city taxing is giving up that property tax revenue stream just as you would a, a single family house that pays property taxes annually. The city will be getting a like kind amount of that 25% of the rents to, to help offset that. The, the difference being, and there's the capital stack for the developer, which I'm certainly not privy to, but they've got other equity and debt partners. Rather than getting that cash flow annually, like all of your other property taxes, we would get start, we would begin accruing for those rents immediately. We would not be receiving them until the property sells the first time. So if all goes according to plan and it sells after five or six years, that's part of that, that cash payment that comes due when the property transacts. And it's accrued for and we're getting it, but we're not able to kind of touch that money, so to speak. We can't plan to use it in the future until that happens. So if the project, project is a success, we'll see that money sooner. If the project isn't the success that they hope it to be, it could be 10 years down the road. There's no, the, the, then the, the offset become, or the, the consideration for you all would be, you know, how is this property going to, to develop without this PFC, without the, the incentivization that the city is bringing to help get that lot constructed with this apartment building?
To be more precise, the circumstance now of an undeveloped piece of property versus the proposal we're looking at, there would be a revenue stream that we are going to be guaranteed that exceeds what we were getting now at this current time, correct?
That's correct. You get roughly $6,000 a year now.
And a PFC is typically used to attract capital that otherwise would not come into a location for the purpose of building housing. Is that essentially right?
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Mr. Isbrand?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, it doesn't mean that if this didn't go through that there couldn't be other development on that property that would increase property taxes more than $6,000 a year. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's always.
I, I think it's important to put that out there, make sure that there's an understanding of that. And then you said, if it's a success, five years or whatever, if it's not a success, 10 years or whatever. What do you define as success? Is that capacity of the facility or?
Meeting their projections as they, as they demonstrate them from the outset. And what it looks like on paper now looks very good. And certainly you would hope that, that they would achieve that, but have to always consider, well, what if it's, we have an economic slowdown generally in the economy, struck the apartments and it doesn't fill up in the way that, that you thought. My personal opinion with the growth we're seeing in Texas, it's that probably not very likely to be an outcome, but it's one that is worth considering.
Thank you.
Mr. Joyce?
Mr. Friedman, is it within your skill set to be able to evaluate the projections that you just ran through on us to see how realistic they are?
It's a bit outside of my, I'm not a commercial real estate expert. And so
Okay.
Outside of my exact skill set.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions, counsel? I have a couple. Mr. Friedman, you mentioned the property that you were working on in DFW Fort Worth that they did it. And you said that was a little more complicated because there was federal tax credits. Can you differentiate what happened up there versus what's being proposed here?
As I understand this project, these are market rate apartments for anybody to live in and the apartments will be leased at a market rate, whatever the market will bear. The difference between a, a senior living facility or, or affordable housing, as those cases may be, is that the rents are controlled. And so in order to, for the, a developer to construct an apartment building where you've getting a controlled rent, it's less than what the market would otherwise bear. There's other subsidies that come into play, whether that's from the state or, or federal government.
Thank you. And one last question. You mentioned the 75 year lease. That's been a sticking point for residents here, and I guess me frankly, is that industry standard or is that, is there flexibility there from what you've seen?
I've seen 75 years. I'll defer to Jim Plummer, your, your, your special counsel on this that's been engaged on the specifics of that. He's, he's really the, the legal mind to ask that question to. He does a considerable amount of these.
Perfect. And do we have any further questions for Mr.? Yes, sir.
Just a clarification. I thought I heard you say that these would be market rate apartments. I thought that we had a dedicated number of these that would be set aside for individuals who are below a certain threshold.
That I may have misspoke and I'm, I'm not aware of that fact.
Yeah, I believe it's 50%, 80, 80% AMI. I see Mr. Plummer nodding back there. Okay, we'll get, we'll get clarification on the next agenda.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, I, I apologize if I'm misspeaking. I know that Mr. Plummer will, will straighten you all out for anything I've accidentally misstated.
Perfect. Mr. Freeman, thank you so much for your time.
You're very welcome.
Okay, next up, we have six point five deliberation regarding an offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect that the city council seeks to have locate in the city and with which the city council is conducting economic development negotiations. Possible executive session pursuant to Texas government code section 551 dot zero eight seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. I know that we have a couple of people signed up to speak, so we will go to that list right now. If you wouldn't mind telling us your name and address, and you have three minutes. First up, we have Ms. Nguyen.
Hello, my name is Kim Nguyen and I and my husband, Robert Nguyen, have been citizens of Castle Hills for the past 32 years. I am concerned over the proposed total tax break for 75 years for an apartment complex on Northwest Military Highway. If the city of Castle Hills council signs on to this tax abatement apartment deal, I and my neighbors feel it will unfairly burden the taxpaying citizens of Castle Hills. In what way will approving 75 years worth of total tax breaks benefit our city or citizens? I can think of not a single benefit such a deal would give us. On the contrary, it will add extra traffic, utility resources, and an increased need for sanitation, police and fire employees to care for this minimum 300 additional people requiring city services. I believe it is fiscally irresponsible to fund this tax abatement apartment complex with our city's tax revenues. The taxpaying citizens of Castle Hills will be footing the tax bill that helps the finances of the developer and leasing companies. Can you give me a single reason we citizens should be in favor of this idea? As our representatives, do you approve of giving these tax breaks? Do you feel that this is in the best interest of our city? When will this tax deal be put up for a vote by our city council? I'm asking that a town hall meeting be called for by mailed announcement so that the citizens can speak and ask questions and be included in the decision of how to spend our city's tax resources in this way. Would it be possible to put off the zoning hearing for this property that is scheduled for next month? I believe it is currently zoned commercial and that the zoning change would be requesting that the property be altered to residential multifamily zoning. To change the zoning before the matter is decided is a waste of time and it signals that the council is already willing to accept the apartment complex. The commercial zoning of that land was done by our city planners because it is located between two busy commercial streets. I'm sure you know that tax revenue from commercial property is at a higher rate than a residential property rate. Also, commercial properties bring in tax revenue from sales tax. To change the zoning would be denying our city the higher rates of both. of both commercial and sales tax revenue. Is it possible for the city council to put off that zoning hearing until the apartment complex decision is made? One of the councilmen wrote that it's too early to predict the outcome of this matter. If it's too early to predict the outcome, the city should certainly not be adjusting the zoning to suit the developer. Please consider canceling next month's zoning hearing on this property. If you go ahead with the zoning hearing, I hope that the citizens are able to speak on the matter since it will be changing our tax base of this currently commercially zoned property. And I'd also like to say, if I have time, that I live and work as a teacher in this city. And I can afford to live here and if we want to, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Next up, we have Mr. Nguyen.
Good evening, Robert Nguyen, 209 Garden View. I've been in real estate for about 40 years and I certainly do not recommend that the city get involved in speculative real estate, particularly apartment complex. Very risky proposition. There's one way to look at this, I think, is opportunity cost. That's a certain certainty in this. And you look across the street of Winston there, there's a five-icke track with the commercials shopping center on it, identical sized track that's paying the city over $25,000 a year in taxes. The future value of that $25,000 a year in 75 years at 5% assumed to increase is $20 million in 75 years. In addition, if you say the sales tax off this property would be about $6,500 a year, that would be accumulating at 5% per year for 75 years. That's $5 million of opportunity cost. In addition, thirdly, the associated expenses of our city for fire, police, EMS service, of servicing these 400 residents that are moving into this property, not to mention street maintenance, which obviously we've had a lot of talk tonight on, which I am very grateful for. First time in 32 years, I've not had to dodge potholes going to my home. So thank you very much for that. I'm very favored of pursuing that, but that will be an additional $20 million if we look at $25,000 a year for our services, city services, private services. So you're talking $45 million opportunity cost of 75 years for that abatement on that property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. And we have one more signed up. I couldn't read your last name. I didn't want to butcher it.
Good evening. I'm Darlene Metter, and I have been a, I have lived in Castle Hills and raised my family since 1982 for the last 40 years. And good evening to the council and fellow Castle Hills citizens.
Your address?
My address is 214 Garden View. I'm asking for the council, the mayor and the city manager to reject the proposed Castle Hills Lot Apartment Tax Abatement Request for the following five reasons. One, January 2022, the Castle Hills Reporter stated that the proposal includes a 75-years total tax abatement for this project. That means no taxes for the citizens of Castle Hills, which I think would not be in the best interest of our citizens. Number two, it's my understanding the land is currently zoned as commercial and to change it to multifamily would negate our city's sales tax revenue, as Ms. Nguyen had just said, as well as a generally higher commercial property tax revenue. Again, a negative for our citizens of Castle Hills. Our city already consists of primary residential properties. Much of our city, 40% of the landmass is already tax exempt to include our churches, our schools and the Boy Scout Park. The city would be adding 300 or 400 citizens or 6% to 7% of the total residents if this project is built, while the remaining 94% of the citizens would be carrying the tax load and burden for the Castle Hills Lot's residents. And finally, this project's tax abatement would mean an increased need for our police, for our fire, for our sanitation departments. Without the new apartment taxes funding all these services, it's been a burden on our city's citizens of Castle Hills. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Do we have anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay, next, I think we're going to have Mr. Plumber come up. Is that correct, Mr. Rappley?
Yes, ma'am.
If you spoke, I'd encourage you to stick around, please, and see if some of your questions or concerns are addressed by Mr. Plumber. I can tell you that this council has committed to transparency and that we are ensuring that this process has opportunities for multiple town halls and specifically virtual options as well so that people can join safely. That being said, we have Mr. Plumber here with Bracewell, who is our counsel for this. Mr. Plumber has done quite a few of these, is my understanding. And he's going to answer some more questions. Mr. Rappley?
Good evening. We have been before you five or six times addressing some of these issues and some of the same issues. And you should expect that we are going to be in front of you and the citizens at least two more times. Approximately a month, month and a half ago, we put out a schedule that included two public town hall meetings as part of this process. Because of the COVID situation, we delayed those town hall meetings. But we are now currently trying to schedule them. So I want to reemphasize that this process is open and the citizens will have input. And we will continue to come back and answer questions and try and address some of these issues. The key issue that has been criticized or addressed tonight is to explain economically how this deal is a better deal than not doing the deal. And so what I have put up on the screen is the tax analysis that we presented last, I think, month. And we can get you all a copy of that because I know you can't see it. I certainly can't. What this analysis shows on the far left-hand side is an assumption of the total taxes of this piece of property is paying today. It's $32,000. That's city, county, school, everything. The next column over are the taxes that this property is paying the city. In this analysis, we have assumed that the property would be developed in year 10. We know from the current market position that an apartment project cannot be developed on this tract of land of the quality that's being proposed at this time in the marketplace. So to run an analysis, we assumed that the land would sit vacant till year 10. And then in year 10, there would be a $60 million investment on that tract. So this apartment project would get built at some time in the future. Then it would start paying $478,000 to the city. That's the city's pieces of taxes. If you go back up to the very top of that column, and this is a 75-year analysis, if you go back up to the top of the column, you'll see the net present value of all those taxes is $6,900,000. Then we started looking at this project. The project, the first column is the annual fee for this project. The annual fee that has been proposed by the developers, $250,000 at closing, then $25,000 a year increased by CPI. I want to reiterate that that's what's been proposed. There's been no negotiation with the developer. Those numbers could go up. If you take the present value of that payment, and that's a must-pay dollar amount. So that's not subject to anything else. It's an absolute expense they must pay. If they don't pay, they would be in default under their lease and they would lose all rights to the building. So that net present value looks like $870,000 or $79,000. Then the next column over is the 25% of tax savings. And you'll see we have a row of blanks because for the first five years, actually the first 20 years, it's assumed that that will accrue and will be paid upon sale. The first sale you can see on the screen, that amount would be a million 445,000. Assuming that the project sells every 14 years, and that's a pretty conservative assumption. Apartment projects usually sell between years five and years 10. That would generate a net present value of over $9 million. The next column over is the 25% share of sales. You'll see we've pro forma to sale in five years because that's what this developer tells us he intends to do. And it generates a $5 million number. And then throughout the rest of the 75 years, it generates a net present value of $8,600,000. Total net present value of this project is then $18,690,000 versus the $6,900,000 that the city would get if it didn't do anything but a $60 million building was built in 10 years. So you get roughly three times the benefit by doing this transaction under the projections as you would have collected in taxes. So economically, the city should be better off doing this deal. Now, a couple of things I want to point out. If you go back to the column with the eight million, I think it's 311 at the top, that's a rental number. That number is due. And if they fail to pay that number, they lose their lease and you own the building outright with no encumbrances. So even if they never sold this transaction, and that's not going to be the case, but if they never did, you would still get $15 million net present value versus the $6,900,000 in taxes. So you're going to get roughly two to three times the taxes you would have collected if you do this deal versus waiting and letting the building develop organically. Now, let me go back to one of the assumptions. You see in our analysis, we show 10 years of current taxes. We don't know whether that's going to be five years. It's going to be 10 years. It's going to be 15 or 20. There's no way of knowing, so we had to make an assumption. Then the next thing we did was we assumed that we had a $60 million value built in year 10. Let's go back to the retail facility across the street. And I don't know if this is true. This is just what I heard from one of your citizens. They're paying you $25,000 a year. On the day we close this deal, you'll get five times that. And we haven't negotiated that number. So when you look at this deal versus an unknown deal, maybe it's a retail unknown deal, that retail facility is not generating the kind of dollars that this will generate. And so if you leave it as it is and a retail facility goes in, I would suggest to you that it, maybe it's like the one that's there. Maybe it's double the one that's there, still only $50,000 a year. And in this case, we're projecting about $250,000 a year in rentals and roughly about a million dollars of value in sales price every year. So that is the reason that we have presented this deal to the city is because we believe that it gives you a economic value far in excess of what would naturally happen on the site. I can't guarantee it. I will readily admit that. But it is a known quantity. Nothing will happen until the day this deal closes. You're not going to be bound to do a deal until it is fully financed and ready to start construction. So it will be as close to a guarantee that something's going to happen by the time we close and by the time you approve a deal, as there is possible to give you. You know, you can do all the what ifs in the world. The truth is, if you as a council, and I've told you this before, if you as a council think this kind of an apartment project is going to go on that tract in the next two or three years without subsidy, don't do this deal. We don't think that's going to happen, just given where the numbers are in terms of construction cost versus rents. And so that's part of the reason that we have been in a position of bringing this deal to you. And I say we because I mean me. I represent you. If I didn't believe the deal had some benefit to you, I wouldn't be here. The developers are not here tonight. We didn't really see a reason for the developers to come in, that they will be at all the public meetings, they will answer any questions anybody has. And they can address, you know, who they are, what they are, what they're going to do. And a lot of what I'm telling you is based upon what they have told me and what I have seen in the marketplace. We're going to go in exec session and we're going to talk about some business terms. And we're going to talk about some ways that maybe we can improve this deal and maybe ways we can reduce the risk on this deal. And just begin to talk about how we want to negotiate this deal. And there's going to be a lot of variables in that. But I think we will improve on this deal from the city's perspective by the time that we're done. And I'd really like to be in a position of telling, being able to tell you, I can tell you right now, you're going to get more money from this deal than you will taxes. The other thing I want to address real fast. The issue is, you know, what on the zoning? Don't do the zoning until you know you got a deal. You've got a couple of zoning hearings coming up. And one of the things I want to encourage you to do is to hold those hearings because they're hearings. You need to hear from the people. They need to hear what this deal is about. Now, I'm not sure about your zoning timeline and your general counsel can address that. But the zoning is not granted until the city council votes. The fact that you have a hearing, even if you get a recommendation from your zoning group, it's still not done till you vote. So I mean, I think we're going to be a little farther down this road before there's an actual change in the zoning. But I would encourage you to hear from your citizens. Let's see, is there anything else in here I need to address? Increase in services. Mr. Rappley will be doing an analysis of the increased cost in services. And we will be discussing, you know, if there's an increase in cost in services, what guaranteed fee do we need to get to cover those increased costs in services? And that's one of the things we'll be discussing later.
And Mr. Plumber, just to clarify for counsel, I've asked both chiefs to give me their opinion on the potential impact of this project. But there is no impact to sanitation. The development would have to go through a commercial entity, private entity like a Republic or Tiger or Waste Management. So there's zero impact on sanitation. Thank you.
And hopefully I've at least touched on some of the questions that were asked tonight. If you have any further questions, I'm happy to discuss them further. If you want me to go through any of the things we've been through before, I'm happy to do it. Talk about how these deals are structured, what the risk is to you. I'm happy to go back through any of those things if you'd like me to, but I don't want to waste your time. We've heard it before.
Thank you, Mr. Plumber. Counsel, I know that we probably want to go into executive session at some point in the entrance of interest of transparency. I'd like to make sure that we ask any question that we can out here. And I'm sure Mr. Plumber will flag us if we start broaching the executive session. Mr. Gregory?
On your handout that I asked you to provide for us.
You know, the one thing that's bothered me about this whole thing, uh, this is not your first dance. And it's like pulling teeth, this should have been the first thing that we got. Instead, wait until I asked for it and you forgot it for us. The one thing on this page I find rather I need an explanation for. This, the on the traditional structure, it totals up to be property taxes of about forty-three million dollars over seventy-five years for Castle Hills. That's based upon property value growing at one percent a year. Now, I can't think of anything that grows at one percent a year, be it comic books or my house. And my house has grown well over three and a half percent the last five years and more so than. So the figure is probably closer to three percent, which makes under the traditional structure. A hundred and twenty-nine million dollars of property taxes. Now, I for the life of me have looked hard and struggled and I'm sure you will be able to correct me. I don't see how we get beyond a hundred and twenty-nine million to break even.
It's very simple.
And and the dollars are deflated as we go along. A dollar when I was born in nineteen fifty-two has the purchasing power of two pennies today. That's a dramatic drop. And you'd have to have a dramatic increase in what is being paid in the latter years, frankly, in all the years. To make this an economic plus for the city. Uh, I don't, when you, I was excited when I heard about this coming and then I've gotten into particulars and I'm not. Uh, I've seen quite a few high rises around San Antonio. That people waited for and they got Patterson Place. In Alamo Heights, the high rise that looks over the Rock Pile, over near Trinity, that's nothing but improved valuations for the various neighborhoods that they've been in. The medical center high rise, that was done forty years ago. And that's improved. The valuations are sky high now today. I can, I find it very difficult and more importantly, the one over in Houston in River Oaks, which they s- built smack dab right in the middle of River Oaks. At which I looked at buying something forty years ago, I could only afford the second floor of a forty-story, I think it was forty stories. That's gone a long way to improve. The entire city of River Oaks, just like in Alamo Heights when Patterson Place improved, I mean, it gave in a value you can't put a dollar sign to. But there was a substantial increase in value to where they were built. I don't see this.
Well, let me explain.
As even, I don't see this as anything close to it. It's.
May I explain it?
Do right ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so we had to adopt some kind of increase in value, right? And it could have been five percent, it could have been seven percent, it could have been ten percent. Anybody could argue we were wrong, no matter what number we picked. We picked one percent, and here's why. The numbers in the left-hand column grow at one percent. The numbers at the second column grow at one percent. The numbers in the third column grow at CPI. The numbers in the fourth column grow at one percent. The numbers in the last column grow at one percent. If we choose five, every column goes up. The ratio stays the same. So we chose one, knowing it's not a realistic growth factor. But it doesn't matter because it shows you the ratio of the numbers. So, right now, we're showing a net present value of six billion nine to the city. Let's just assume that that's, we're going to add a three percent inflation factor. That number's going, oh man, fourteen million? You go over to the next column, that's CPI, that's probably around three. You go to the next column, that goes up by three, that, I can't see what it is because I'm old. Um, that nine million two eleven, that number goes up to twenty-seven. It, the numbers are proportionate all across this chart. Now, we can run it for you and show it to you if you like. But it it will stay virtually the same. Remember, you're getting rent equal to twenty-five percent of the tax savings. So if the value of the building goes up, you get twenty-five percent of the value increase every time. It it's just like your home taxes, yes, they're going up way faster than one percent. But if the value goes up, you get twenty-five percent of the tax increase. So your values go up. We run these numbers to show you how they they relate to each other. We can put ever whatever value increase in there you'd like us to put and we can rerun the numbers. Um, and what you'll see is they'll all go up proportionately, except for the annual fees or CPI, which I think is currently projected at two.
Mr. Gregory, you got to turn your microphone on.
Could you explain the, under Castle Hills revenue, PFC, under asterisk, capital rate growth, three quarters basic point seventy, seventy-five basis points, that's three quarters of one percent. Per transaction, could you explain what that means for everybody?
The value of an apartment project is determined by taking the net operating income of the apartment project. And dividing it by the capital rate that is in the current market, okay? So in the current marketplace, the cap rate is probably five percent, maybe somewhere between four, seven, five and five, two, five. Over time, you want to be conservative. So you don't say that on every sale, the cap rate is still at five. So every time there was a sale, we increased the cap rate by seventy-five basis points, which reduces the value of the building on the sale, which makes our numbers more conservative.
That explains the percentage points on the far right column.
Yes, I think it does. Yep, five, two, five is what they started at and they went to six.
Yep. A lot of these numbers are fixed, not adjusted for inflation, which I find interesting. In fact, a lot of the numbers aren't adjusted for inflation at all, because you don't know what the inflation is going to be.
Um, I think all the numbers are adjusted on a one percent inflation, except for maybe the CPI might be two, I don't know what they ran that out.
Well, I'm looking at the third column and you have a swath of about twelve to thirteen years and. One, two, three, four, five different areas that that number is static.
Yeah, they they just didn't adjust it, but every few years, that's the CPI adjustment. It it would just, if we increased it by two or three percent every year, it would actually just be higher. It would show a better return, so this is more conservative.
By law, the building has to have between fifty and sixty percent of a certain group of people that are below the, or. That raises two questions in my mind, what if you can't find them? What if you can't find that number, what happens by law to your tax abatement?
It it would go away, they'd have to pay taxes.
How long, how long a leeway do you have to fill that if you if you're short?
Uh, it's an annual test.
So it's, or an annual test. HUD came out with a number and you're, I see, there's another one being done over St. Paul Square. And they use the figure of. I've got so many little yellow notes around here, I think it was fifty. Fifty-nine thousand three hundred dollars.
Yeah, fifty-nine, two eighties, the actual.
Is that for an individual or a family of four or a couple?
Either, any?
And they use forty-four thousand four hundred and sixty for a single person.
Ah, see, then they adjusted that by family size and we're not doing that here.
Why aren't you?
Um, because you have indicated that you'd like this to be as close to market rate as we can get it.
Because fifty-nine thousand dollars for a family of four. Less twenty percent. Because you're, you want to make sure it's only eighty percent of that number of fifty-nine, three hundred.
No, sir, that that number is the eighty percent number.
No, that's not what the news item said.
Well, I mean, I can, I can show you the Texas charts that show that, they're from the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs.
I would like to see that.
Okay.
Then you, well, then that means that raises them to a tax rate of twenty-two percent under the tax code. So if they've reduced the amount of income by twenty-two percent due to the tax bracket they're going, they're going to be in. That reduces substantially the amount of money. That fifty to sixty percent of the occupants in the building will have left over. And one of the things, when you came to council the last time, you were saying you were going to save Castle Hills because our business district is just horrible. And all these people are going to go out to restaurants and all these people are going to do this and the other. At twenty dollars an hour, the minimum wage brings you forty-one thousand six hundred dollars a year. It looks like half the building is going to be just slightly above. A few thousand dollars, what a minimum wage earner makes. And I don't see how that person, then you start taking out a thousand dollars a month of the rent or whatever the rent is going to be. If anyone, what it is, that doesn't leave a lot of money left over for the inhabitants. Go out and beef up the business.
Okay, first off, when you called the people at St. Paul Square, how occupied were they?
I didn't call the people at St. Paul Square, I read the news article that came out.
Okay. All of these projects are generally ninety-five to ninety-seven percent occupied, and there's three percents generally the turnover ratio. There's not a problem finding the people to fill these projects. Um, your math, I I do appreciate the math you're doing, but the truth is. That these projects are filled by people in the eighty percent bracket every day, all day. Um, these guys will have a marketing study that will show that they can do that. Um, and the other thing that your your. Um, a- analysis may not take into account is that quite a few of these may be occupied by two people. So you may have a one-bedroom project occupied by two people. Um, and they may have income over that between them. Um, but the rents that will be charged for these units will be basically the market rate units and the eighty percent units will be virtually the same until you get into the three bedrooms. I think we've provided the rent schedules. Um, and we have not had any problem leasing them up. And before we ever close this, they will have to have a market study that will show that they can get those rents and keep this place occupied.
So on the one-bedroom apartment, if you act as if it's a one-bedroom studio in New York, you can cram three kids in there. You're each making forty thousand dollars a year and claim that there's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Okay.
It it uh, it's done every day in these projects.
You see, this is the problem I have with it, then you've got to jiggle all these numbers around to get this and that. When you don't have the stability, that projects that bring in. People who want to stay in Castle Hills, who want to make a home in Castle Hills, who bring value to Castle Hills by their very being, being here for a long term. This, this doesn't, as as all the high rises I mentioned to you before, those were homes. And they became very strong assets to each city. I just don't see that we can look out seventy-five years and say, this apartment complex. Which can never go under fifty to sixty percent of people who have less than immediate income of a certain range. Brings long-term intrinsic value to Castle Hills. And sometimes you're not able to touch it in dollars and cents, which bothers me. But I don't see it brings anything to Castle Hills. It's nothing but transitory meaning. I mean, there are people in the city who've been here ten, twenty, thirty, forty years. Who would love to be in a Patterson place that they can live twenty or thirty years in. I don't know, it's just, um, it's just very, very, uh, very good for the developers. That's why they're trying to do these as frantically as they can, or the legislature, I think, is going to, I wouldn't be surprised if they take another look at this. Because this has so many imponderables about it, it's, it's not even funny.
Mr. Gregory. I'm finished, thank you so much, I know some other councilors have questions, uh, Mr. Paul.
I just got a couple of quick comments. Uh, you've been over the numbers, I understand the numbers, there's always a question whether the numbers will work or not at the end of the rainbow, who knows? If, to be clear for those listening that haven't been through this. The PFC obviously allows additional cash flow for the developer that wishes to use it to make the project work.
Yes, sir.
If someone wanted to make this project work, not using a PFC, they have that option, but tell the public why that is. Possibility and opportunity does not exist today as far as because of the market base rate, et cetera. I think that's an important thing to understand. Number two, if we approach this, we're approaching this, whether it be a PFC. Or another project that's not a PFC, everybody's got to go through the same hoops. Or you've got, you've got to go through zoning, through traffic, through everything. So there's nothing special, the question becomes, the other thing I want to bring or ask the question is. Some of these PFCs, maybe they've had some issues and maybe responsibility by the city, but those are PFCs. Not brought to the city by developers, those are the PFCs that the cities did themselves.
The only PFCs that I'm aware of that have had any issues were the city or or more accurately. The school district.
Right.
That issued debt and then said they would repay the debt.
So we, they have the responsibility, they, in those circumstances where we have none. We have control over the lease for seventy-five years unless they wish to spend a ton of money to buy it out. And then we can make a determination that we, seventy-five years from now, somebody else will make a determination whether or not the. It's beneficial to the city or not, because that's the whole objective, obviously. We've had this piece property sitting there, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure, we certainly. So so I'm, I just do those conceptual, because we can get into weeds with numbers all day long. And the numbers are what the numbers are, and I don't think the numbers are the issue, I think the issue is. Uh, why we would allow somebody to do this versus somebody coming in and just wanting to build a development. And I think that's something that somebody that you would be a quick explanation, thank you.
I I think the, the first thing you have to consider is no developer is going to give you the interest that they're giving you, think do it on their own. They'll just do the deal, make the profit, keep all the profit. They don't come to you unless they need you. They cannot build this building based on the rents that they can get in this marketplace without some assistance. The numbers simply don't work. Um, and so you will not get this kind of an apartment project. For some period of time until rents go up to a level or costs come down to a level, which generally doesn't happen. Such that the rents would pay for the cost. And so th- this project's not going to happen, that's why we chose a ten-year period without a development. Is because looking forward, we, we don't think that anybody's going to be able to do this project, probably for ten years. Now, can they do a lesser project? Yeah, maybe they can. Um, can they, can, can you get another retail facility like the car wash sits there? Yes, you can. Um, but they're not going to generate these kind of revenues. I- i- if you go back to the retail facility next door, what does it generate for you? Twenty-five thousand dollars in tax, six thousand dollars in retail was what was said tonight, I don't know if that's right. That's thirty thousand dollars. The day you close this deal, you'll get five times that. And that upfront payment is really designed to give you a replacement revenue stream. For the, for the years that the project's being built and the first couple of years of the project. You're going to get upfront cash because we know that this thing's got to be built, that's a two-year period. And we know the first year, it's going to. And we know the first year it's going to be paying expenses, probably the first five years, and it will be paying accrued expenses. To the equity partner who put the money up. And so we try to collect some money upfront to make certain. That no matter what, you're in a better state than you would have been in leaving the project alone.
Mr. May?
I have a couple of comments as well. One of the things that we know about housing is that it's an economic driver. And I know you don't have the statistics right now, but what might be helpful in the public forum. Is if we can get any kind of data or statistics that show, you know, increase in sales tax revenue. From, you know, surrounding communities when you do have an increase. In this case, we've got. Well, it's anyone's guess, but we're looking at three hundred to about four hundred and fifty residents, which is substantial amount. The second thing I would note is that the lowest monthly rate is eleven hundred and the highest is twenty-four. That's not exactly cheap. So I think to compare apples to apples, oranges to oranges. Why not get some of the apartment complexes that are right across the street on Lock Hill Selma? And some that are maybe within a mile radius. And my point being that the whole purpose of looking at this project is. Understanding how this can benefit our community and bring housing where it currently does not exist, but is needed. And so I know our citizens are going to want to know answers to that question. Again and again, these are the comments I'm getting, which is what value does it bring to our community? I can think of dozens of values, but I think numbers, statistics, sales tax revenue. Comparables with other apartment complexes that are within one to two mile radius, that would be an important thing to present.
I don't know. I don't have sales tax numbers. I have, I have information on Savio's loss and the, and the. Advorm tax growth that surrounded it. But I'm not sure that's really comparable because you didn't have a bunch of vacant land surrounding this. So I will have to do some work to try and figure out how I can maybe address the sales tax number. I don't know of anything off the top of my head, but I'll work on it, see if we can do it.
Thank you, Mr. Plummer. Mr. Isbrand.
Mr. May, I think that's a wonderful idea. Thank you for bringing that forward. You know, as of twenty twenty, here's twenty apartment complexes in San Antonio. Where these deals have been done. So maybe if we can't get it for this. We can at least have somebody go look at these other twenties, twenty, twenty plus now, I imagine, since a couple of years have passed. To see what kind of economic development that they, they had there as a result. I remember Mr. Breimer at our last meeting. Telling us how he sat and I guess it was tie toe pass and looked out the window with shame at the. Retail that we had here and how he and he alone could bring forward all this new retail to make this, this happen. And I was quite impressed by his promise there. And I think this would be a real good way to quantify that versus just. Putting that hypothesis out there. Mr. Plummer, I, I don't think there's any question that everyone considers you to be. Probably the foremost expert at this. So I guess I'm. In lieu of the fact that Mr. Breimer did not feel a need to be here tonight, I did have a lot of questions for him that aren't here, but maybe I can ask you to. From your expertise, if you can help to frame that up, because I think these are just things that you pick up the newspaper every day. You can read about, and I think it would be helpful for our residents to understand. Also wanted Mr. Breimer to be here tonight so I can, could congratulate him on his next venture, which is to do something very similar. I think Mr. Gregory referred to this down at St. Paul's Square. And I hope you all saw the rendering that was in the newspaper a couple of weeks ago. It looks remarkably like he was, what he was proposing here. When I read this story, I was really intrigued though by the fact that he's, they're moving forward with this property. They have obviously, it looks like they have the plan for construction of it, but there was no reference to funding of it. So I sent an email to the reporter who wrote this story and asked her about it, if she had any perspective on it. And her response was when Vicaro presented the designs to the Historic and Design Review Commission. Last month, the firm's representatives were asked about that, but, because I'm, and they said they didn't know yet. So I'm kind of intrigued what the deciding factor is between I don't know yet. And a, I'll show up in Castle Hills and immediately ask for seventy-five year abatement. What's different about these that would help us to understand why it seems there's two different paths being taken?
I don't know the answer to your question, but I will buy you dinner if that does not end up being a PFC project.
And, and I think that, I'll, I'll take you up on that, because I could always use a free dinner. And I think you're probably right. But I think it was very interesting that that's, so that in and of itself, I think is very telling to me of, you know. Again, this is not a developer who's coming to Castle Hills because he believes in Castle Hills and wants to support Castle Hills. This is a business opportunity. And he himself has said that he's been involved in a number of them before and he has every right to do that. But I think it's important for us because we talk a lot about the money involved here. And I can, you can almost see dollar signs sometimes in people's eyes about this and look how much money we could make and how we could go and spend it. But I don't think you can really put a price tag on the quality of life in the neighborhood or in a community. And that's what concerns me about this. From the time he's, he's come here. I'm not, I'm not looking, you know, I, I just want us to have some conversation about this. Because I think a lot of people are thinking these same things. But you see different things going on in different places and you're going, why is that? Why is this different in Castle Hills? Here's another one that was in the newspaper last week, that the Josephine, which is going to be over in the Pearl section. Is one that is getting that seventy-five year, right? And all the critics of it have said that these units are priced basically. So people in that eighty percent market rate can't afford them. So it's just like, if this is affordable housing, which was first represented to us to be affordable housing. When we started using that term, we were then reprimanded that we should call it workforce housing. I'm not sure what we're calling it anymore. But I think it's really interesting that if you go and look at the news coverage, you will see a lot of people say. If this is meant to be affordable housing, the prices that are being asked for are not affordable housing. Which goes back to the question, I think maybe Mr. Gregory was trying to ask before. If there's a guarantee that there has to be these many people and these many units, not literally these many people. But these many units occupied by that. Is this pricing not already putting the, pricing them out of Castle Hills if this is supposed to be affordable housing?
I don't think so. I think, I think they're going to have market studies that support it. And I, my experience is none of these projects that we have done have had any issues filling up. Except there is a project that was done for student housing. And it had trouble filling up because it was on a, a community college campus.
The Tobin. Loss at SAC.
And it's being converted into basically the same product. And I'm quite certain it will fill up very quickly. It, it is not, I will emphasize again, this is not meant to be low income housing. It, it is meant to give young professionals, folks who might be retired. A very nice community to live in. It is not cheap. I wouldn't stand up here and say that it is. But I don't believe you, you have, from your perspective, there's, there's a couple of issues. One is you want a high quality product. You don't want a, a low income product that's not maintained. The fact that you have fifty percent of these units at market rate is going to help deliver and help ensure that it remains at a high quality product. So there are benefits to this structure to the city. I agree, it, it is not. Everything for everyone. But it is a project that will bring a very high quality apartment project to your community.
And, and again, Mr. Plummer, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. You don't represent the developer here. But as an expert in this, I think these are questions that keep coming up over and over again. And it's important for us to talk about it as frequently as we need to. There is another story actually that just appeared this week regarding St. John's. You familiar with St. John's? That would be across from the St. Paul's one.
St. John, isn't that on Mitchell?
No, there is a tax credit deal that is St. John's that is on Mitchell down at the missions.
Yeah, no, not, not, not.
There is a St. John's deal that is proposed. I know downtown, that's probably it. Near La Vita.
Yes, sir.
I, I am familiar with it.
Okay, I'm intrigued by that one because the story that appeared this week, actually just a couple of days ago, said that basically. Even though they had secured up to fifty million dollars in tax exempt bonds, they had opted not to go that route. That the church said that they can, they can fund this project or they can move this project forward without it being in jeopardy. And I think part of the question was about equity or with the housing authority, whatever would have in this. Does this have any relevance to why can they come up, why can a church come up with fifty of the sixty-five million that they have? But a developer who now has another project going down there at St. Paul's as well as the one he's doing in Castle Hills. Can't come up with the money to fund his.
Okay, the tax credit project did not work. The numbers did not work on that. They then moved and said, we are going to do a PFC project. I got an email this morning requesting us to participate in that project as a PFC. The church can tell you whatever they want to tell you. But I will tell you right now, that church nor that developer have the money to make that project happen at this point in time.
I guess we'll see. I won't, I won't question the honesty of the church. I'll just take it all at face value.
Me dinner if it doesn't happen?
Sure, that's a, that's, that's a deal too. Lastly, and then, because I don't, I don't want to take this, you're familiar with the National Association of Latino Community Asset Builders, correct now, Cap? They're a pretty reputable organization, aren't they?
They're pretty reputable, but they don't like me.
I've, I noticed that in the story that I read, but I, and, and that's not the reason I pointed out. But I was intrigued by their report, their assessment on projects like this. And their statement in there and counsel, I would really recommend that we all read this for the perspective on their concerns. About how the PFCs operate, because I think there's some lessons we could learn from that if we go down this path. It's an article that was written in February of twenty twenty called A Rudderless Ship. With little oversight, the San Antonio Housing Trust has offered thirty-nine million in tax breaks for affordable housing. But rents are too high for most low income residents. I think there's a lot of interesting material that also relates again, PFC formation, things of that nature.
And one of the things I want to point out about that is now Cap's duty is to assist with low income residents. And these projects are not designed to assist low income residents.
Wasn't this legislation originally intended to support housing in areas where there was need for affordable housing?
No, it was intended to support workforce housing.
And split that hair with me again, because we used to call it affordable, then you said we should call it workforce. What, what's the difference?
Here's, here's kind of the. Lay of the land, and I want to tell you there, the definitions are everywhere, okay? We consider workforce housing to be individuals who are between eighty percent and a hundred percent of median income. We consider affordable housing to begin at sixty percent of median income. That's the tax credit grouping. The city of San Antonio just adopted a definition of affordable housing at the sixty percent level. And so one of the reasons that you're getting all of these confusion jargon. Is because there has not been a definition. HUD says eighty percent is low income. So it is all over the place as to what people label these various income groups. And that's one of the reasons we tried to move away from affordable housing is because. This product was designed, tax credits take care of people sixty percent and below. Market rate and above can afford it. There's a group of people who have difficulty. And they're, they are hardworking wage earners. And this product was designed to help them.
Just lastly, I would also encourage everyone, and again, you know, we're in a fact finding mode. Questions need to be asked. And I appreciate the fact that the request I specifically brought to you to take to the developer to hold these public meetings is going to take place. I wish we hadn't had to have asked for that, that that would have been upfront. And I'm glad that we prevented that from taking place in the height of the Omicron variant and we're able to move it. But I sure hope our community participates in those because these are very complex questions that need to be asked. And lastly, I would just say, the other piece of reading, I think that would be helpful. Is a Express News article for, from September twelfth, twenty twenty called How a Big Texas Tax Break. Created not so affordable housing. And you'll see reference in there to various studies that have been done. And the, you know, a number of quotes that I think will be interesting, particularly those that are, you know, concerned about. The, where this is going, but I would just cite one quote in here that, that, that speaks to the, this legislation that enabled it. And actually two quotes, it says, "It's an amazing deal for developers," said the executive director of Austin's Foundation Communities. "It's clearly a misuse of taxpayer funds," added the co-director of the Texas Low Income Housing Information Service. My point is not to say that they're right or wrong, but there's a lot of information out there that I think everybody should be reading. Go Google it if you take the Express News or whatever. Go look at this. There's a lot that, that, no, I'm sorry.
I said, Google me. See, I get beat up about this all the time.
Right. And, and, and that's not what my intention is here tonight, but I, again, in lieu of the fact that the developer did not come tonight. These were some of the questions I would have wanted to have asked him, and I appreciate you trying to fill in some of those gaps.
Not a problem. The only thing I will point out is the people who criticize the program are generally low income housing advocates. They would want all of these units to be available to the individuals whose income is thirty percent of median income. And they're criticizing the program because of that. I don't believe that this community desires to have that. And so we, we, if at the end of the day, you want to change this deal. And make it far more affordable, we probably can find a way to do that. I don't know if the developer would do it. But I can tell you that these deals are done for two reasons. They're done for affordability. They're done for an economic development purpose. Those are the two reasons. The economic development type of deals are not income restricted. They're not meant to reach the affordability. We also do these deals where we put in a significant amount of affordability. It, it does change the profile of some of the tenants. And so you have to ask yourself, which way do you want to go as a community? If you want low income, true low income, I will tell you, do a tax credit deal. Get the federal subsidy to help you, but I don't think this community wants a low income project.
Yeah, and that's, that's not what I'm proposing or suggesting, so that's kind of off the mark from the conversation. But what I am suggesting is that the way this was originally represented to us by Mr. Breimer, was this is going to be affordable housing. So I went and looked based on what the construct is of what affordable housing is, until you all wanted to change it or that he wanted to. Change it to workforce housing. So again, I think that's part of the problem is what's the story here? Let's get, you know, we need black and white. We need to know what the details are. We need to know what the numbers are. So good objective opinions can, can be made in the process. And thank you for answering my questions.
Mr. Joyce, I know you've been waiting patiently over there.
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Plummer, thank you for answering all these questions. And I have a few that probably we are going over familiar ground. But there are a few new ones as well, but bear with me if you, if you will, for a moment. And talking to some of the citizens, one of the more interesting questions, and perhaps it's a rhetorical question for now, but the question is, with this tax break, what is the impact to all of those other entities? And perhaps the largest of which perhaps is any ISD, where if we have three hundred fifty or four hundred tenants here, you know, probably a bunch of them are going to be kids, and so they're going to have to educate these kids without the benefit of any income. So that's, but that's the way it's set up is, I don't know, there's anything that you and this city can do about that.
Can I, can I address them one at a time? Because otherwise they're going to stack up.
Go ahead.
Let me address that one specifically, because that's really important. When you Google me, you'll find out, you'll find my wife. She was the president of the board of directors of Northeast ISD. So I'm very careful about what we do to school districts, because I pay for it at home if I don't do anything right. The way the schools get paid is they get paid so much per child per day, roughly seven thousand dollars per child per day across a year. These transactions are set up so that the school district continues to receive seven thousand dollars a day, regardless of what is on or off the tax rolls. If you are a property-rich community, then, and you're collecting more than seven thousand dollars per child per day, you pay money to the state. If you're a property-poor community, the state pays you the money to get you to that seven thousand dollars. So whether a piece of property is on the rolls or not is neutral to the operations of your school district in terms of the amount of money they receive. Now, we estimate that if you take the two-bedroom units and the three-bedroom units in the project, that you can take ten percent of that number, and that will be the number of students roughly in an apartment project. So usually that number is twenty to thirty. If you take, and I'm doing this off the top of my head, but take twenty thousand dollars times, I mean, I'm sorry, twenty students times seven thousand dollars, that's a hundred and forty thousand dollars of additional operating revenue to the school district. So it can be a positive to the school district. Our school districts on the southern sector of this city have actually said we are in favor of these projects because they contribute to our operating revenue. The one thing I would say, and, and I don't know the facts here. If you have an overcrowded school district, and you plop one of these apartment projects next door to that overcrowded school, and they're already in portables, you may exacerbate, exacerbate the overcrowding. So that is something to look at. The county has, does not collect taxes on these deals. The county is currently lowering their tax rate, just like Mr. Friedman indicated to you, that as the values go up, the taxes may go down. The county is looking into whether they want to get in the housing business and do PFC deals. But they have not objected to these deals publicly. And so after doing this for quite a while, the other entities that we have talked to have indicated that they are neutral on these transactions. You would never ask a school district to favor a tax exemption. That's something horrible to ask a board to do at a school district. So they just stay neutral. Northeast has been neutral. We've asked Northeast, what's the effect? And we've got no answer. And so that's, that's where we are with the other taxing jurisdictions.
Very well, thanks. Another question that I've gotten multiple times is the seventy-five-year thing. There's a lot of angst about the seventy-five-year timeline. I've never made a commitment for more than seventy-five years, but anyway.
Yeah.
So is there an out? Somewhere within that seventy-five years, if it goes bad, if the management, you know, let's say it sells two or three times, whatever it is, thirty years from now. And the managements are knuckleheads, and they don't manage it well, and the thing goes downhill, and the rents drop. And the validity of the project is jeopardized. How can the city step in to fix the situation?
The city would not, first off, I don't think you'd step in to fix it. Here's what you would do. You would send them a default letter under the lease. The lease is going to say, you must maintain this as a Class A apartment project. If they're not doing that, then you would send them a default letter. Then you would start negotiations. And, and depending on how badly you want it out, you could just say, now we want out, pay your taxes, or let's go to war. We're going to default you. We're just going to take your damn building and we'll sell it to somebody who will run it properly. The, the, you will be the landlord. So landlords have a lot of say in how tenants operate and how they maintain their building. And in whoever the tenant is, whether it's five tenants from now, if they are not maintaining this building in a first-class manner, they will be in default under their lease. So that is, I mean, the fact pattern that you gave, that's how you would deal with that. There is not an automatic out. I wish there was. I spend most of my time talking about the seventy-five years. I have literally tried now on three occasions to get a lower, shorter term. And the banks say no. So it has to be a seventy-five-year. It's not a financeable deal. As a practical matter, this deal, I think, will get renegotiated several times over that time period. And if there is a time period in which it makes more sense to the, a proposed buyer to just have this be a hundred percent market rate, they're going to come to you and they're going to say, we want to get rid of this fifty percent and eighty percent. We want to pay our taxes. And then you're going to be in a position of saying, okay, fine, walk away, or hmm, that would be fine, but you're going to pay me. And so, because you have a contract. It is highly possible that rents will go up at some point. And they will conclude, if they don't like it, if you're, if you're not getting along, and this isn't happening well, they may come to you and say, we want out, we'll pay our taxes. And so, but I can't put anything in the documents where they can't get this thing financed. And, and trust me, if I could, I would, because this is the sticking point in every community. It, it's always an issue. It's just something that we can't change in the financing world.
Okay, very well. I think the other question I had was more about the due diligence that the CARRO themselves are doing. Because from our standpoint, the SARS does the water and CPS does all of the utility, the electrical utilities. You know, it's almost a ten percent increase in population for good old Castle Hills, right in that one area. And so we assume, well, we shouldn't assume, we need to make sure that there are plenty of utility capacity there, both in water, sewer, electrical, and so forth, that it doesn't have a negative impact on the rest of the community, or even our friends across Lock Hill Selma in San Antonio.
I think in your normal permitting process, all of that will be checked. I know that there was a real concern in the beginning about drainage off of the facility. I know that that is being addressed. And, and I think that's a very legitimate question, and I think we ought to ask them to give us a report on, you know, address this, address this, address this. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. And so that, I'm sure they'll do it.
Right, okay. I think you've seen that the memo I put together after discussion with some of the citizens a week or so ago. And I think if I may, I know you're working on that. Mr. Ipley tells me you guys are working on that, so thank you for that. But I just wanted to, to emphasize the, the thing that perhaps hit me the most, which was the idea of the traffic study extending into those city, into those other streets, Winston and Castle and Fox Hall.
I talked to the, sorry, I don't remember the name of the traffic study people. Kimberly Horn, I talked to them this morning. They're going to expand their analysis and into those streets. And they're going to do two things. One, they're like, okay, we'll measure, measure the project's impact on those streets. And I indicated to them that that's not enough. Because I don't think the, this, I don't think there's going to be a measurable impact on those streets per se. What I wanted them to do was do a traffic study on those streets. And, and look at impacts and look at mitigation activities and come back to us. So it's, it's a little broader than the project alone. And, and they said they will do that. They will have the traffic study to you on the fifteenth. It may take a week or two more to take care of those streets, but they'll get it done.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. Reimer, or I'm sorry, Mr. Plummer. And I know we talked a lot about the value and being conservative, but ultimately they're doing to take out debt to pay for this project. What is the proposed value that they are planning on financing?
Give me a second. Forty-one million, one hundred and forty-two thousand in construction loan, twenty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars in equity for a total project of sixty-three million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Sixty-three million, that's out the gate without even any kind of inflation. That's just what we started off at.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And one of the things that, one of the reasons I want to, we asked this developer to do certain things, and he's basically said yes to everything. The reason for that is, he's got to do most of that for his financing. I mean, for somebody to walk in, a bank to walk in and give him a forty-million-dollar loan, they're going to scrub this project. And his investors with twenty-two million, they're also going to scrub this project. So him knowing answers to the questions you were asking are, are going to have to happen. Or nobody's going to lend him the money.
To that point, there's a lot of obstacles that I think the CARRO will have to address before they get to the point that this gets to green light from city council. That being said, putting a timeframe on that, I think we had said maybe June or July.
June.
So June, so we would have, what is that? I guess almost three, four months of.
Now, Mayor, I want to, I want to point out a couple of things in that, because that June is a close date in terms of having everything signed up. We got to create a corporation. We got to hold an initial corporate meeting. There will be activity that will have to happen before June in order to be in a position of him closing on the real estate in June. So I mean, yes, there is, there is quite a bit of time between now and then. But I want everybody to understand, particularly the citizens, that the council will have to take some non-binding actions ahead of that in order to be in a position for him to close on that real estate.
So you said non-binding actions, but if I understood correctly, in, in June, we still have the opportunity, if something comes up along the way, to pull out with any consequence to the city?
That is correct.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood we will have to ask council to, to, to do some things that are not commitments to the project in order to make the timeline to really consider or commit the project. And, and the council can say no at any time. I mean, honest to God, you know, it's not agendized, I don't think, but you could tell us, nah, we're not doing this, had enough of this, goodbye. That'd be it. And you can do that anywhere in this whole process. So you're, you're not bound, and you won't be bound until such time as this project is fully financed and ready to go, and we know all the answers.
Thank you. So one of the terms that has been thrown around a lot is Class A. And it sounds good. I think that's by design, right? Nobody wants a Class Z. Can you tell us what Class A is and how the developer and subsequent owners would be required to adhere to that?
Yeah, the, the definition of Class A is much like the definition of affordability. People use it very loosely. There is no defined term. I can't say, the Real Estate Council says, here's what's Class A. It is a generally recognized term that the top end of the market is Class A. I have no problem if in the Class A definition we want to include known apartment projects being built up at this time. So because it's, it's, it's hard to put your hands around, one of the things we have done before is we have said, you've got to maintain it in a Class A project, at least at the level of X apartments or Y apartments or something similar. So that we can pick, pick a market-rate apartment out there as our go-bye. So, because it, it gives us something tangible. And so, I mean, we, we will struggle through this process, and we can identify those kind of things that, that we feel like are something that helps us get our head around what that really means.
I think that would be helpful. At, at least me personally, I have a hard time imagining what exactly Class A looks like. So if we could have a comparable somewhere else in the city that we can show the residents, this is the level that we are expecting for the city of Castle Hills. Drive by and see it. Put your eyes on it yourself. I think that would make it a little bit more, I guess, easy to relate to.
I, I think that's perfectly fine. I don't know if this developer has access to some of the prior projects that he worked on, because he recently did change companies. But we probably also could arrange to have tours of those projects. So, and certainly could give you the name of any of them. But I've done that before as well, has said, okay, Mr. Developer, pick the projects around town that you think are comparable, and let's arrange a tour, if, if you'd like to.
Are there any Class B PFCs?
No. No, because I, I think I've done every one in the city, and I, I don't believe that you ought to be giving your tax exemption up for a, a, a lower-level project. That just doesn't make a lot of sense.
Okay, last question. You mentioned there was to be a marketing study as part of the developer's due diligence. I'm assuming that's going to be by a third-party entity that's kind of look at it objectively?
Yes. I don't know who it will be, but yes, it will be a third-party expert in market analysis.
And are we entitled to see that as partners in the deal?
You're not entitled to see it as partners, but, I mean, not entitled, sorry, lawyer. But we will get a copy.
Perfect, thank you. Mr. Gregory, had a comment?
I'm glad the mayor brought up the designation of Class A, because it is nebulous now, as it'll be five years from now. Two or three owners down the road, they wouldn't have the biggest idea what it is. So it's a standard without anything you can point to. You can, it may be this today, but it's that tomorrow. But I, I have a curious question to ask you. You've said several times, for this and that, the numbers do not work. The numbers do not work. What are the, and what's the return the investors are expecting to make on this project?
I will tell you, Mr. Gregory, that the market rate return that I see through most investors is an eighteen percent IRR upon sale. That's eighteen to twenty is what I see in the marketplace every day. I don't know what this one is off the top of my head, but I can get it for you.
Well, I'm all in favor of capitalism, but I, I really, I get a little queasy when we're sort of being used as a test tube, as a suburban city for this type of project, so we can enable somebody to make an eighteen percent return on their money. I'm glad for them. I wish it was part of my money that was being used to get that eighteen percent. But I think that standard is what's skewing a lot of things negatively in this project.
That standard is the same standard a market-rate developer has to deliver. That's just the standard in the real estate market. Doesn't have anything to do with this project. So.
Mutual fund managers are being told they've got to make thirty percent a year, but they're not off come their head. But anyway, it's that which I think is driving a lot of these things that require us to. that require us to consider putting up millions and millions of dollars be part of your investment, which we just passed tonight. We just passed tonight an investment program of what we agreed to here in Castle Hills, how to manage our money. And it has prudence and safety and a whole bunch of words that make you feel good, but you have an idea what they are. I don't see that that partnering with a real estate situation of this magnitude and of this complexity falls in the category of prudence and safety, because safety is sort of eliminated by the 75-year duration of multiple owners and the vagaries of the market. You cannot predict that. And we're a little town. We're not even 4,000 people, I don't think. And the slightest thing that goes wrong, where the magnitude of what happens is significant. Even the Titanic went down with an iceberg. It wouldn't take that, it would take just a little bit thing to disrupt the future of the city significantly that we've never recovered from. You know, I go downtown and I look at one building that's right across from the brand-new Frost Building, of which they're now trying to sell. And I look at that building, it's the Robert E. Lee Hotel, and it's been boarded up for years, but it still stands. And I wondered if the people who built it 75 or 100 years ago figured it would be standing empty in a downtown area, contributing nothing to the vibrancy of the downtown area. I'm just clarifying why the numbers do not work, and it the numbers do not work because of what the people who are putting money into it expect to have as a return on their money.
That may be true, but that's the world we live in. And so the numbers work for this deal. The numbers wouldn't work without your participation. But the project just doesn't happen. It's just that simple. You can collect your $7,000 a year, but you're you're not going to get a project like this.
You know, I have a lot of faith in Castle Hills, that this is not the only project, and that you're not the, they're not the only developers out there. That our day and the sun will come too. We're putting a lot of money into improving this city, drainage and streets, a lot. That changes a lot of things. We're, we've, we're trying to be a destination city. In one false step, we lose that ability. And you never get it back. So of course, putting up anything on a lot of empty ground is going to get you more money than the lot of empty ground. But that's not what we're comparing. Or at least that's what I see. Can't speak for the rest of the council. Thank you.
Mr. Paul?
Mr. Plummer, we've had the discussion before about what constitutes a Class A property, what doesn't constitute Class A property. And if I remember our conversation, everything determines through the lease, through what we would, what the PFC would have, and that would control it. And whether we put in there that Class A property be identified as the same condition, the same quality as built, that's pretty specific. And and so there are things that have not been ironed out, that we've had all these discussions before. And until we get to see what it looks like, which you've said you were going to present then at the right time, then it's kind of hard to be throwing a lot of this around until we know which way, which way it's going. Again, I, a forward or against it, the key is to remember that anybody can come do this project market-based if they think they could afford to do it. We would not have the control over that as we would have allowing something to happen through a PFC. Am I correct?
That's correct.
And so we have more control over this now. But again, either both of them, the both properties or projects, whichever one comes, still has to jump through the same hoops that everybody else does.
Yes, they do.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Counsel, do we have any further questions from Mr. Plummer? Do we need to go into executive session?
Okay, I wouldn't mind going into executive session for a minute. There's a couple of things I kind of want to lay out for y'all, and just have a discussion about in terms of negotiations that will be coming up. I'd like to plant the seeds in your mind to get you thinking about it, if we could.
Sure.
I don't, do you have a long agenda after this?
We are done after this.
Okay, okay. I don't want to hold up the citizens.
Okay, well, pursuant to government code, what is this, chapter 551? It is Tuesday. Thank you, Mr. Schnell. 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, Tuesday, February 8th, 8:46. We are now going to go into executive session.
I'm sorry, I just.